Is the Wednesday, April 15th, 2020 morning session of the Portland City Council. Carla, good morning. Please call the roll.
Good morning, Mayor. Hardesty?
Here.
Udalee?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Under Portland City Code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by phone, and the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The public can also provide written testimony to the council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. At cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and promote physical distancing. A pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your continued patience, flexibility, and understanding as we manage through this difficult situation to do the city's business. Robert Ordnerly, I'd have you, well, why don't you go ahead and read the rules of decorum, although I believe we'll find that we're pretty thin on public testimony today.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. This is-
Oh, it's Karen. Sorry. Thank you, Karen.
Good morning. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony, while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. First up, Carla, is communications. I understand none of the individuals responded, but if you could call each of their names, please.
Yes. Item 280, request of Sally Bronsmann Cecil to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. Item 281, request of Farah Young to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And item 282, request of Mariah Allen Claire to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And 283, request of Edith Gillis to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And item 284, request of Lou Church to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers.
And Carla, it's my understanding you reached out to each of these individuals to invite them to provide their communications testimony this morning, but they declined?
We did. We did not. We heard back from one, but he did not register for the mornings for the session.
Okay, very good. No worries. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda this week. Has it been pulled?
It has not.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
All right. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move to the regular agenda. The first item is item number 286. Please, Carla.
I'm in agreement with LifeWorks Northwest for the new options program in an amount up to exceed $427,000 through June 30, 2021.
Colleagues, this ordinance is an amendment to an existing IGA between LifeWorks Northwest and the Police Bureau. This funding will allow Life Works Northwest to continue their programs that address drug and alcohol addiction, mental health, and parenting life skills for sex trafficking survivors. LifeWorks also facilitates the Sex Buyers Accountability and Diversion Program, otherwise known as SBAD, which is a mandated one-day class focused on first-time offenders of misdemeanor prostitution-related crimes. These are, of course, the purchasers. The class includes eight hours of presentations by a survivor, the Portland Police Bureau, and a Multnomah County District Attorney, along with others who educate the class on the impact their behavior has on the victims, the community, and them personally, including their own family. The city wishes to amend existing grant agreement with LifeWorks Northwest to add $427,000 to the threshold for the new options program. This will alter the grant agreement to align it with the fiscal year's 2019, '20, and 2021 appropriations for the program. And this amendment will allow the Portland Police Bureau to grant LifeWorks Northwest funding for the remainder of the grant agreement's term through June 30, 2021. And I understand that we have, it looks like Amy Shay Reyes is here to testify on this item and potentially Cecilia Hyman. Who? I think. Is that right?
No, Cecilia is on a different item.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, people, if you can make sure that city staff, as you check in your name, make sure the correct item is behind your name, and that way I know that you're going to be providing testimony. Go ahead, Amy.
I think Lieutenant Bezner wanted to speak first.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. My name is Lieutenant Leo Bezner of the Portland Police Bureau. I'm also joined by Sergeant Derek Fox with the Human Trafficking Unit, obviously Amy Shay Reyes, who's the Associate Clinical Director of LifeWorks Northwest, and Bob Delgezi, who's the Business Operations Manager at the Portland Police Bureau. We're here today asking for support of the agenda item as you explained it. I'd just like to touch on a couple of high points of the IGA and what it provides. As you were talking about, Mayor, the LifeWorks Northwest program, the new options program specifically, known previously as the New Options for Women program. The police bureau has partnered with LifeWorks in providing the services through that program to the survivors of human trafficking. They're providing the substance abuse, mental health services, and parenting life skills. But they also provide, most importantly, the recovery mentoring, which helps guide them through these programs, them being the survivors of human trafficking. LifeWorks has also provided service, or partners with other service providers and outside agencies, so that they're not just in this alone. They do this, again, providing those services, but they also do it in a way to be able to provide services best suited to the needs of the clients. The Sex Buyers Accountability and Diversion classes you had touched on, sir. One of the things that we find from that is that we always do a feedback survey at the end from the folks in the class. And what we consistently get from them is that the eight hours of information that they receive, not only about what this means to them and their family, but also from the survivors of human trafficking, when they are talking about what it meant to them, how it impacted their life, and the impact, the profound impact that it's had on them. A majority of the participants in the class tell us that that information is not only startling, but that it provides impetus for them to change behaviors potentially going forward. As you mentioned, sir, the class is a mandated class for first-time offenders only arrested on misdemeanor prostitution-related charges. We don't have any information as far as long-term success, as far as providing deterrent, but I can say anecdotally that we don't see consistently a lot of repeat offenders when we're doing street-level missions. And talking to people, we haven't seen a great deal of them that have been through the program that are back out and on the street engaging in prostitution. The one last thing that I'd like to point out is that it is an amendment to the agreement in that the increase for funding is in the threshold or the spending authorization, and that it had previously been allocated. And your support of the IGA helps us in our efforts identifying and supporting victims of human trafficking and providing deterrent for folks engaging in prostitution-related activities. Thank you very much for your time, and I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so the new options program is for individuals who have been trafficked through the sex industry or who are currently working in the sex industry. And this grant allows us to provide services in a bit of a non-traditional way in which we can provide outreach, do work in the home. Our recovery mentor is a graduate of the new options program. So she went through the whole process, and she's able to help support and guide the individuals who are part of the program. We also work with DHS to help support the individuals being able to have their kids return to home and how to help them parent and keep the kids at home. I would say, you know, we provide quite a bit of reporting each year to the city and to the county. We work as part of the collaborative around sex trafficking, so with, the collaborative is huge, as you know, with multiple providers to make sure that, you know, we are providing the mental health, the addictions, the recovery and mentoring, the case management, but also connecting and providing housing, food sustainability, education. SBAD is kind of a bonus to the program. The funding that we get through SBAD or, you know, from those individuals who are taking the class helps us support our individuals. For example, we were able to buy a computer, like a laptop, for one of the new options clients who was starting school. So, you know, really helping with that proactive changes in their lives so that they don't feel the need to engage in the sex industry. It is really hard, and it's really a hard thing for people to walk away from. And so we are able to provide ongoing support. We have clients who will come back and sort of check in with us and do more maintenance work. I would say, you know, our graduation rates are pretty good. We serve at minimum 60 individuals a year. And it's just, it's a really lovely program, and I think what's great about it is our staff's understanding of this issue, their ability to be trauma-informed in their approach. It's completely nonjudgmental. And we look at relapse as part of recovery and not as something that people are intentionally doing. So we're really open to working with clients as long as they need our support.
Very good. Amy, I see Commissioner Hardesty has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
That's okay. Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Lieutenant. My question is about it's the scope of the program. It sounds like you're working both with people who are participants in the sex industry as a customer, as well as on the other side, with people who are trying to get out of prostitution. Is that correct?
So the bulk of the program is really individuals who are trying to exit the sex industry or who have been trafficked. The SBAD part, the part working with the offenders, that is a really tiny piece. It's more like when you get a bunch of driver, you know, like parking tickets and you have to go take the diversion class. We only, we used to do that class every other month. We're now doing it anywhere between every three months, every six months, now that we've had to cancel a couple of classes due to COVID. So that's not the bulk of the work that we're doing. That's more of a collaboration with the police department, DA. We bring in a survivor. We bring in someone from Sex Addicts Anonymous. That's a one-time thing. The bulk of the work is really working with people who are trying to exit the industry. And we also do what's called community court, and this is free of charge. And individuals who have gotten their first charge for prostitution are able to come. We have two weeks where we do an intensive kind of psychoeducation around addiction, sex work, healthy relationships. And they're able to do that in order to get their charge dismissed. So we're doing that for the victims as well. And a lot of times that is allowing them to kind of get hooked in with LifeWorks and then continue with their treatment.
And so I guess this is probably a better question for either Sergeant Derek Foxworth or Lieutenant Bezner, because it sounds like LifeWork has a fabulous program to help people get out of that life. But I'm actually curious what the city of Portland is paying for with the $462,000 additional dollars that we are putting into this contract, especially if this is such a very small piece of the work that LifeWorks is doing. So thank you, Amy. I guess I'll either wait for Sergeant Foxworth to speak or maybe have the lieutenant come back and answer that question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hardesty, this is Lieutenant Bezner. I'll try and answer that as best as I can, but the bulk of the money goes towards the survivors or the victims of sex trafficking for the programs that Amy was talking about. It's my understanding, and I think Bob Delgezi is on the call, and he could probably answer the money part of it better than I can. My understanding was that the money had already been allocated previously, but there was a spending threshold in place that we had met for various reasons. We met last fall. And what we were asking for was an additional increase in the spending threshold rather than, I guess, new money is the best way to put it, if I understand that correctly. But to specifically answer your question, the money goes towards the services provided to those victims of sex trafficking, the survivors. The SBAD program, the way that that came to be with LifeWorks was that the city needed to have a organization to facilitate it, and this was many years ago. LifeWorks was approached because of the existing IGA and their understanding of the work and being able to pull together the different resources, and obviously the DA's office providing some information about the severity of the crimes and what that can mean to people personally. And then the police bureau is part of that, which is explaining some of the information that we have about prostitution and trafficking type of situations. And it being a, you know, for lack of a better term, a scared straight type of class, where we try to give many different perspectives. But LifeWorks was asked to pull that together because there is a portion of the class, it is a fee associated with that, that the participants have to pay. And that LifeWorks then collects that, and it's allocated between the DA's office or Multnomah County, the city, and LifeWorks. And I believe it's a third each entity. And then LifeWorks is paying a fee for their time in putting those classes together. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I appreciate that. That was very helpful. I guess my last question is, we're extending a current contract, and this extension will go for how long?
I believe, in looking at my notes, it was extending through next fiscal year. Appropriations through 2021.
And my last question is, how long has this contract been in place?
I can answer that. We have been working together since 1999. And I kind of wanted to jump in, that this money pays for our mental health, our addictions, and our recovery mentor. It pays part of their salaries. It does not pay at all for, none of this money goes to SBAD. It only goes to programming and supporting clients through staff costs and then any extra things that their clients need.
And if, this is Lieutenant Bezner again, and I apologize for that if I wasn't clear about that. SBAD is a self-sustaining program. That program, the funds from that program, the city, I can speak to the police bureau, the way that the police bureau uses those funds, we use that to support our street-level missions and interdiction efforts on the streets. So in other words, overtime costs associated with that, any other costs associated with those types of missions run to deter people from prostitution procurement, so to speak, or the buyers. But that's the way that we provide a street-level presence, and that's how we use that money. That money goes strictly towards those efforts.
Commissioner Fritz has a question. Good morning, Commissioner. You're muted.
Difficult managing this whole thing. I was muted by the host.
Oh, sorry.
I've been unmuted by the host. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. For those of my colleagues who haven't visited this program, once we get out of the crisis, I encourage you to do so. I went during my first term, and it's really an amazing program. And indeed, it's so important to me that this was the famous cut that Mayor Charlie Hales proposed in his first budget and led me to vote against the entire budget, and then we got the funding restored later in the year. So this is a hugely important program for the survivors and to help them. LifeWorks does amazing, amazing work, and I just very much encourage you to go visit the program as soon as we're able.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very good. Does that complete the presentation? And Carla, it's my understanding we do not have public testimony on this item. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you all for your presentation. Great work. Next item is 287. Please, Carla.
287, amend intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County to fund a portion of the salary expense for the County Domestic Violence Coordinator.
Colleagues, this is an amendment of an existing intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County to fund a portion of the salary expense for the County Domestic Violence Coordinator. The Multnomah County Department of Human Services employs a domestic violence coordinator that works with the Family Violence Coordinator, sometimes called the FVCC. The FVCC is met since 1987 to develop and implement strategies to more effectively intervene in domestic violence and provide information to members and interested community members and agencies. Membership of the FVCC includes the Portland Police Bureau's Domestic Violence Reduction Unit, the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, the Multnomah County District Attorney's Office, the Department of Adult and Juvenile Community Justice Services, personnel from the Family Court, Multnomah County's Legal Aid Services, and Domestic Violence Victim Programs. The Domestic Violence Coordinator position is located within the Multi-Jurisdictional Domestic Violence Reduction Team, the Family Services Division. The city has funded a portion of the Domestic Violence Coordinator position since 2003, when the block grant funding for this activity expired. In 2017, the agreement was amended to add three full-time FTE advocate positions and increase the agreement's funding threshold. The city and Multnomah County wish to amend the agreement for the city to increase the amount by $948,765 to continue to fund the Domestic Violence Coordinator and three full-time FTE advocate positions for an additional three years, as proposed by Multnomah County's Department of Human Services, with the agreement's threshold not to exceed $2145,888 in total. This amendment will extend the term of agreement from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2023. And I believe we have Captain Derek Rodriguez here to testify on this particular item.
Good morning. Alex Sanchez from the county, and Sergeant Ron Mason will be given a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Alex Sanchez. I use named pronouns. And I am the Domestic Violence Coordinator from Multnomah County. So it's a pleasure to be here with you today to talk about our collaborative work to address domestic violence and sexual assault and sex trafficking here in the county. Before you, as you heard, is an ordinance that funds a portion of my position as the leader of the Domestic and Sexual Violence Coordination Office, as well as several domestic violence response advocates in our DV Crisis Response Unit, co-located with PPP. This conversation feels very timely as we continue to see a rise in reports of domestic violence during the COVID-19 pandemic and as we call upon our DV and sexual assault continuum to provide services in new and innovative ways to keep survivors and their children safe in really uncertain times. Just a little bit of background, the Multnomah County Domestic and Sexual Violence Coordination Office, also known as the DSVCO, is tasked with the coordination of our multi-jurisdictional response to DV and sexual violence. Since 1987, our coordinating body, the Family Violence Coordinating Council, has co-created our strategies for prevention and intervention and policy advocacy. We share critical information through monthly trainings, and we build strong foundational relationships to support our collaborative efforts to end domestic violence. The FVCC is over 50 members strong. You heard just a few of them read out by the mayor. We have representation from community-based providers, law enforcement, criminal justice, homeless services, mental health, and many other aligned sectors. It is a really powerful group of advocates and experts, and I am really honored to have the opportunity to support them in their efforts. And in addition to this high-level strategy work, the DSVCO also helps to fund and coordinate our community-based provider continuum, which includes crisis lines, relationship-based advocacy, housing and basic need support, emergency shelters, culturally-specific services, and so much more. Deep prevention and intervention work is happening every day in our community-based agencies as they hold together a really critical safety net for survivors and for their families. The DSVCO also manages the Gateway Center for Domestic Violence, which provides walk-in advocacy, support for restraining orders, and navigation to the full array of DV services in the county. We are also very blessed to have Commissioner Hardesty as the co-chair of our Gateway Advisory Council, and I just wanted to take this chance to thank her for taking on that role. During this pandemic, the Gateway Center and our navigation partners have done incredible work to get survivors access to restraining orders by helping them to provide telephonic support, fillable electronic forms, and advocating with the court to move to a telephonic process for all orders. And I wanted to highlight this to show how the deep collaboration within our multi-jurisdictional team supports innovation when we need it the most and helps us to, as a system, center the needs of survivors in our response to crisis. The final piece of our work that I want to highlight is also partially funded through this IGA. Our Domestic Violence Crisis Response Unit, which is co-located within the Family Services Division of the Portland Police Bureau. It has a staff of nine, and the DV crew, as we refer to them, are frontline advocates taking on some of the most complex and challenging cases of domestic violence in our county. They work closely with our law enforcement partners to provide services to some of our most vulnerable survivors and to their families. And I want to turn the mic over now to Lieutenant Ron Mason to speak more about that collaboration as he's done such deep work with our DV crew, and we so appreciate his collaboration and his advocacy for this program.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Ron Mason. I'm an acting lieutenant and have been stationed for the past seven years out at the Family Services Division supervising domestic violence investigations. As part of that time, or all of that time, I have worked very closely with the DV advocates and seen what they do. So I'd like to just give you a brief overview of the DVRA program, the Domestic Violence Response Advocates. So the program started in 2012, started with two advocates from Multnomah County. And that program was very successful from the beginning in the response to survivors' needs. We expanded the program between the city and the county in July of 2017. We reallocated two DV advocates that were working day shift in calling and following up with survivors and trying to get them resources that they needed. And we transferred those positions to the DVRA program because it was so successful. That program has now grown to five advocates, two of which are city-funded. The remaining city-funded advocate works with the Special Victims Unit officers, hand in hand, working the cases that they are assigned to. In 2019, the Domestic Violence Response Advocates responded to 950 cases. The Special Victims Unit advocate was 112 cases, but that was only a partial year. The advocate worked for nine months of that year. The team also advocates and teaches locally and nationally about the programs that we have right here in Portland. The D V R As respond on-site or by phone with patrol officers, whichever is more appropriate. They help with immediate and physical needs like shoes, diapers, coats, food, safe housing, those sorts of things in the midst of the crisis that they're going through. They also provide initial safety planning and then they can do some short-term to intermediate-term advocacy intervention work with the survivors. And they also help navigate the criminal justice system and provide a connection and resources to our community partners that also play a huge part in this. This program is an invaluable cooperative between the city and the county that has helped, literally helped thousands of survivors over the past few years that it has been going. So I ask for your support in approving this I G A and thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you. Colleagues, any further questions on this item? Carla, I understand there's no public testimony. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Next up is item 288, please, Carla.
Amend intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County to address youth and gang violence in an amount not to exceed $186,146.
Colleagues, this ordinance amends an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County to address youth and gang violence in an amount not to exceed $186,146. The city participates with other local entities in the Multnomah County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, sometimes called LipSec, to address a variety of public safety and justice issues that confront our community. LipSec adopted a strategic plan to address gang violence that is titled "Multnomah County's Office of Juvenile Justice and Linquency Prevention Comprehensive Gang Model Implementation Plan." One full-time program specialist senior position, one F T E, will be housed within the O J J D P for the purpose of implementing monitoring and providing ongoing evaluation of all aspects of the strategic plan under the guidance of the LipSec Youth and Gang Violence Steering Committee. The funding of this position through June 30th, 2021, will be shared by the county and the city, with each funding half of the F T E amount. Existing appropriation, the existing appropriation is $71,083 in the Police Special Revenue Fund for fiscal year 2019-20 budget will fund the remainder through June 30th, 2020. An appropriation of $76,311 in the Police Special Revenue Fund fiscal year 2021 budget will fund the remainder through June 30th, 2021. We have Bob Delgese here to present on this item. Bob, take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Bob, I can't hear you. Are other people having problems hearing Bob? Yeah, so Bob, it's a bad connection. You don't have your video on, so I can't try that trick with you. See if you can speak directly into the microphone. See if that improves the clarity. No, can't hear you at all. Bob, let me do this. Let me move on to the next item, and maybe could you use the call-in number? And Carla, can you work with Bob to see if we can get a better connection just on a call-in line so that he can present on this item?
Mayor, I think we can get Rick. Oh, Rick, go ahead. Oh, Rick, are you?
Yeah, I'm here. I was going to suggest that he just exit and then rejoin again. Or call in, that would be fine as well.
Okay, Bob, I'll assume you can hear that. Rick suggests you exit the meeting and come back in, and if that doesn't work, go ahead and call in. And in the meanwhile, what I'll do is table item 288 for just a few minutes, and we'll move on to item 289.
Accept bid of Landis and Landis Construction LLC for the Arbor Lodge Kenton Station Sewer Rehabilitation Project for $4,689,495.
Very good. Thank you, Carla. This procurement report is for the Bureau of Environmental Services project that will repair over two miles of failing sewer infrastructure in the Arbor Lodge Kenton neighborhood. I'll turn this over to Lester Spitler to present this item for procurement. B E S Project Director Daniel Botman is also on the line to answer any project-specific questions. Gentlemen, take it away.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Lester's not presenting. This is Kathleen Brennis Marua, the Procurement Manager for Design and Construction Services.
Thank you, Kathleen. I appreciate it.
So I am here to recommend authorization to enter into a contract with Landis and Landis Construction LLC for the Arbor Lodge Kenton Sewer Rehabilitation Project. The authorizing ordinance was passed by council on December 4th, 2019. The engineer's estimate was $5,350,000. We issued an invitation to bid on February 4th, 2020, and a mandatory pre-bid conference was held. Five prime contractors attended, as well as three subcontractors. Bids were due on March 3rd, 2020, and we received five responsive bids. The responsive low bid is from Landis and Landis Construction in the amount of $4,689,495.20, and it's approximately 12.4% under the engineer's estimate. The city's aspirational 20% subcontractor and supplier utilization goal applied. Landis and Landis has committed to subcontract 28.38% to minority firms certified by the state's Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity, as identified in the report. They are self-performing 61.6% of the work. Landis and Landis is in full compliance with all city contracting requirements, and I hereby recommend you authorize this contract.
Very good. Commissioner Hardesty has a question.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. Do you have any information about the non-cobid contractors? There's a significant portion going to non-bid, and so I'm curious, as I look at the cobid companies, there's less than 100,000 going to businesses of color, owned by people of color, and over 1,300, I mean, I'm sorry, 1.3 million, that's actually going out in subcontracts. So it seems like, once again, communities of color are not benefiting from this particular contract much.
So I do not have, I have the same information that you have before you. I don't have any reasoning behind the Landis and Landis outreach and decisions to subcontract to certified firms that are predominantly emerging small business, as opposed to minority businesses enterprise. That is something that we can follow up with Landis and Landis and encourage them, as well as all contractors, to seek more minority participation, as opposed to the emerging small business.
Well, I'm just shocked. The numbers are stark. When you look at this multimillion-dollar contract and $90,000 are going to people of color, and that's it? I mean, I'm very disappointed that we would be presented with this proposal just kind of based on the values that we've been using supposedly around subcontracting. So I will need additional information before I would be comfortable supporting this proposal. And I'm hopeful, as we get to the other side of this COVID-19, that we will actually significantly increase minority contractors as compared to what we're currently doing. So, thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions on this item? Commissioner Hardesty, I have a question. This is coming through my office, and I know that that's an important standing question that you always do ask, and my suspicion is if Lester were here, he would have been well-prepared to answer that question because he knows that you asked that question. If it would please you, I would obviously like to earn your support. I'm happy to pull this back to my office for one week if you'd like to get the answer to that question.
Thank you so much. I would very much appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. And without further objection, I will pull item number 289 back to my office. We'll get your question answered, and we'll bring it back next week. And it's my understanding it does not impact this contract materially to bring it back a week later, so we'll do that for you.
Thank you.
Very good. Going back to 288, Bob, are you with us? Bob Delgese? Oh, the times in which we live. We'll hold off a little bit longer. We'll see if we can get Bob on. Rick, have you had any luck with Bob, or are you in communication with him?
I have not seen anything from him.
Carla, are you in communication, or is Kealan in communication with Bob Delgese?
Mayor, I'm not in communication. I know he had some problems trying to sign on early this morning, so maybe that's continuing.
Robert King seems to think he is trying to use the call-in number. Robert, is that correct?
That's correct, boss. He just texted me, said he's muted. I don't know if he can be unmuted by the organizer.
If he does a star six on his phone, that will unmute him.
Let's try a star. Ask him if he, text him and ask him if he can do star six, Robert.
Okay, I'm doing that now.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes. Bravo. Bob, we've got you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I live in a cell phone dead zone, so I apologize.
No worries. So we're back to 288. Why don't you go ahead and give your presentation, please, on item number 288? And just to refresh everybody's memory, this is to amend an I G A with Multnomah County to address youth and gang violence.
So this particular item, this is the item that's running through with the Local Public Safety Coordinating Committee, LipSec, and it funds this position. The resource that we're using to pay for this are within the Police Special Revenue Fund. It is outside the general fund. These are monies that are residual for dealing with youth gang violence, and so the expenditure is totally appropriate with the nature of the revenue that came in for this purpose.
Very good. And do we have questions for Bob?
And I raised my hand, Mayor, but my button is stuck.
I see you. I see you there. Go for it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. So we're actually paying a portion of this staff position for the LipSec, the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. Is that accurate?
It's with the Office of Juvenile Justice, which is coordinated through LipSec, yes.
And this contract is being extended through June of 2021. That is accurate, yes?
Yes, it's to continue the work, and these folks are coordinated with the city. I believe that the Mayor's Office of Youth Violence Prevention is associated with this. So it's a multi-agency approach.
I'm sorry. So are we funding, is this funding the staff that staffs the Youth and Gang Violence Coordination Office?
We're splitting the cost with the county.
Okay. I'm a little confused. This is not connected with the LipSec. This is, in fact, the Mayor's Office of Youth Violence Prevention?
Police Bureau is funding this. The Police Bureau is also tangentially involved. The Mayor's Office of Youth Violence Prevention is also involved. There are multiple parties involved in the efforts of this group.
Okay, let me just try to trace. Whose position are we funding? Where does that body live?
They're an employee at the county.
Mayor, you're on mute.
The individual who actually holds this position is with us on the call, so why don't we let her speak? It's Marcia Perez.
So this is Mary Gealan. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I'm Marcia's supervisor. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners.
Did you hear the question from Commissioner Hardesty? Where does this position reside?
Yeah, so this position resides with the Department of Community Justice. It's co-funded through the city and the county, and it does provide staff support to the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council's Youth and Gang Violence Steering Committee.
So the clear answer is no. This is not one of the Office of Youth Violence Prevention coordinators that report to me. This is not either Nike or Tom. This is associated with the county and with LipSec.
Thank you. That was helpful. I was getting confused. Thank you.
As was I.
I can provide more context if that would be helpful for the position and how it came to be.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about what the position currently does and what some of the outcomes are?
Yeah, so Marcia, I handed off to you to talk a little bit about what you're focused on now and the outcomes.
Sure. Good morning, everyone, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate you having me. Name's Marcia Perez, and so I am the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator who works to oversee implementation of the strategic plan to reduce youth and gang violence. This came out of a community assessment that we did back in 2014, obviously before I was the coordinator. Your ongoing contributions and support to violence prevention in our community is really valued. In the last year, we've really, I've focused diligently on maintaining a strong alignment with the community agencies to prioritize and deepen connections with cross-sector partners. In this time of crisis, communities survive through collaboration. They need, the need for prevention and strategic planning to respond to community needs is greatest right now. And this is just a reminder that all violence shares risk and protective factors fueled by shame, isolation, and desperation. So we can't survive this pandemic strategies without being rooted in equity and justice. So in the past little over a year, some of the accomplishments I'd like to share, just during the implementation in general, over 310 people from 123 organizations were involved in organizing, participating, or supporting activities related to the implementation plan. Youth have been increasingly engaged with the role of policing in our communities, primarily through programs such as Word is Bond, the Youth Commission, the Multnomah Youth Commission, Youth Educating Police, and the Youth Subcommittee. I'd also like to note that I feel like there's been an increase of Portland Police being eager to engage creatively with youth and communities through, and community engagement opportunities and leveraging systems that are working with youth from all walks of life. And just to note, since I didn't really go off the original script, this is derived from six different themes that came out of the assessment. So there are six different work groups that work to target the various themes that came out of what the community said that they needed and wanted. In addition, parents with justice-involved youth now have a resource which helps them understand the process, procedures, and resources that are part of the juvenile justice system through the Juvenile Justice Guide for Parents, which was created by parents for parents. Over 125 participants attended the Parent United Conference last spring, with over 30 expert speakers who joined for special sessions focused on advocacy around things like shaping the system, mental health, and other forms of advocacy. And actually, Commissioner Hardesty, you attended that, and we thank you for your contribution during that time. As a COVID response, this group, the Parent Partnership, was due to host the Parents Summit this May. However, due to our current status, that group is meeting bi-weekly to figure out ways to engage communities via social media. out ways to engage communities via social media, as other platforms, to share really critical information needed for our communities and for parents to come together and, and feel support. The last couple of things I want to mention was that over 80 youth mentors came together to discuss the impact mentoring has on youth who are at risk of being gang impacted. There was, that resulted in more funding for mentors. The Mentor Network also is developing leaders in our community as mentors throughout and come together monthly to share and support, support one another and share resources to their respective organizations. This group is also working creatively to keep communities connected. They're developing a newsletter and recently hosted a parent mentor forum, which brought over 60 participants together this spring to get feedback from parents. And they will be facilitating a back-to-school event this fall, hopefully. And over 130 justice-involved, gang-impacted, or high-risk youth, young men have access to employment readiness resources such as internships, pre-apprenticeships, and employment training. Most recent, Southeast Works developed a screening tool, which helped determine that 92 of their participants were, were reported to be gang impacted. They were able to take on.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. And that's lengthy list, but honestly, I'm, I'm confused. I don't understand what the position itself actually does. Can you tell me, please, what does this position that we are funding do? You've given me a laundry list of all of these holistic events and opportunities and engagements happening in the community, but I still don't know what you do on a day-to-day basis. When you get to work, what do you actually do? What outcomes do you provide?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. The majority of the work that I do is really coordinating and engaging stakeholders to oversee the, these various, the six different work groups that are charged with, or doing these events. So each work group has their own charge of outcomes that they'd like to work towards, activities that they'd like to work towards. And my job as coordinator is to bring folks together, help them have that space, access resources and funding, leverage different partnerships to make sure that we can, that we can get these outcomes that, that are desired as, as requested by the community. So that's what my, my day-to-day is really coordinating and assessing where the gaps might be. So making sure people are connected. Maintaining these daily, the, the work groups on a weekly basis, essentially, since there's six of them, we're on facilitating the work groups and making sure folks are staying connected.
Okay. And if I understand the proposal correctly, and I, I apologize for not having dug a little deeper. I thought my questions would, would be answered. The 186,146 referenced here in this ordinance, is that the total cost or is that just the city's half?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Bob Delgezi. I believe that the amount is the total value of the contract that it's being increased to. So it's a multi-year amount. And it is the city's half.
It is a multi-year amount for how many years?
I believe it's two and one-half years.
It looks like it actually is extended through July of 2020. I'm sorry, July of 20, June of 2021. So it's a one-year extension and an increase is what is being requested.
Yeah. So colleagues, with, with all due respect, I know this is technically my item. I'm pulling it back to my office. I, this needs more work. I, I, I see Commissioner Hardesty as an agreement. I, I, I'd like to spend more time understanding what this contract is for, what we are actually paying for, and what value-added this position actually provides and what outcomes we're getting for this position. We are very tight on dollars right now. And this just isn't as clean as I'd like it to be in order to give me the confidence I need to actually sign on the dotted line. So I'll bring this back next week, but I, I, I need city staff in particular to really double down and give us clarity on what this position is. So we'll move on from there without objection.
Mayor, if I may, as the liaison, thank you, as the liaison to the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, I just want to say that I agree with you that I, I, I have less heartburn about extending this through a year than I do about ultimately, what do we do moving forward? Because it sounds like the work is built around the premise that the Multnomah County Gang Assessment was an accurate document that clearly reflected what gang activity looked like in the Portland metropolitan area. And I fundamentally disagree with the premise that came out of that report. I thought it was very overbroad and painting a whole lot of people with gang labels. That was inappropriate. So I would be happy to work with your office and really be very thoughtful about not just this one, but also about how do we move forward as we start rebuilding. So thank you.
Yeah. And, and thank you, Commissioner. And I appreciate that offer. And certainly, your, your input would be appreciated. I'm even at a more fundamental level than that. I, I need to educate myself over the course of the next week on what this position that we are asking to pay for and extend an IGA with Multnomah County does. And the presentation, in my opinion, does not give me tremendous confidence that these dollars are being effectively spent. I hope I'm completely wrong. And I look forward to being proven completely wrong. I just don't have the confidence, based on what I know right now, that I can vote for this with certainty or confidence that I know that this is the best bang for the buck in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. And so I will rely heavily on Robert King from my office. I will also rely on the input from the Office of Youth, the, the Mayor's Office of Youth Violence Prevention. I'd like to know how this works in concert with the work that we're doing here at City Hall. And I'll probably have a conversation with the Chair, who is the co-chair of LipSync as well, to better understand the importance of this position. But for the time being, I would like to pull this back to my office for further work. Next item, please, is item 290. Carla?
Yep, just second here. 290, authorize $100 million of revenue bonds to finance city operations and undertakings in response to the effect of COVID-19.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've already heard a presentation on this item. Is there any further business? Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
I really appreciate the information that I received last week from the city's Budget Office. I feel much more confident and I understand a lot better that this is only a last resort for us to fill in as we are waiting federal dollars to come in. And so I wholeheartedly support this approach. It's very proactive and it prepares us for the bumps that are coming along the way. I vote aye.
You, Daily?
Aye.
Fritz?
Very much appreciate the work that our financial wizards are doing on this. And Chief Financial Officer Michelle Kirby, City Budget Director Jessica Kennard, all of the mayor's staff are really being very thoughtful in how we go about the recovery. And I'm pleased about aye.
Wheeler?
This is a backstop of last resort. I hope we don't need to use it, but in the event that we have a liquidity crisis, this is an opportunity, is a backstop to give us a bridge to be able to continue to pay our bills, conduct our business operations. But it's a bridge to a very specific source of known revenue that would be coming in. So it's just one more tool in the toolkit. I want to make sure that the city council and the bureau directors have as many tools as possible to help us get through the fiscal crisis that will result from the COVID-19 crisis. I think we are being smart to be proactive and to seek that line of credit in advance of the time we might actually need it. We are simply approving city staff going and securing the line of credit, but this does not necessarily mean we will actually access that line of credit. I vote aye. And I want to thank everybody for their hard work on this. The next item is item 291.
Authorize water revenue bonds to finance water system capital improvements and refund water revenue bonds.
And before we go into the vote, I, I just want to really thank our congressional delegation for their work on this. This is, of course, related to the WHEFIA bonds. The WHEFIA bonds enable us to extend the repayment deadline and it saves our taxpayers a lot of money. So I want to thank our congressional delegation for their hard work over the years to make sure that this tool is accessible to municipal jurisdictions like the city of Portland. Any further business on this item? It's also a second reading. Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Thank you. I will support this because I absolutely agree that getting federal dollars that will help lower the cost of whatever improvements we make to our water system is, is absolutely the smart, intelligent thing to do. Having said that, I still believe that we have other options other than the Cadillac option that is currently on the table. And so it is my hope that we will continue to investigate what we, what we need to do and how we can make sure that we are protecting ratepayers, both in the short run as well as the long run. For me, I'm still concerned about other cities dropping out and going their own way, which means that it will cost Portland water payers significantly more. I am committed to continuing to work with the Water Bureau to make sure that this benefits ratepayers in the short term as well as the long term. So I vote aye.
You, Daily?
Well, I support authorizing these bonds. I want to thank city staff for their work on this item. That said, I continue to have concerns about the proposed water filtration project. And I'd like to have my staff receive a briefing and fully explore any alternatives before the proposal comes back to council. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Well, first I want to echo, and I will echo, the mayor's comment regarding our congressional delegation. I wish you could have been in my office. I got to break the news to the Government Relations Director Elizabeth Edwards and the Washington DC lobbyist Vicky Cram. The Water Bureau heard that we had been invited to apply before they were informed. And they were just so joyful. It was, it's one of the happiest memories I can remember because they've worked really, really hard for this. And I also thank Senator Jeff Merkley for setting up the program and for being our advocates. Lots of people have put a lot of time into this, starting with Commissioner Nick Fish, who guided the Water Bureau for five years, did a lot of work with public involvement to get to the proposal for the filtration plant, which we're now been working on for several years. Thanks Director Mike Stur, Deputy Director Gabriel Thoma, Cecilia Hune, the Water Bureau's Finance Manager, and amazingly, just, just brilliant in the work that she does. David Peters, the Water Bureau Engineering Manager, Astrid Dragoye, and Yessenya Kriya on my staff, as well as Tim Creel, who have all worked really hard on this. This will save ratepayers money. And we are required to do the project. We are doing it with the ratepayers in mind. Obviously, we are very concerned about people's ability to pay their water rates. And we'll be coming back to council with some revised requests for how to move forward on the, the rate requests. And again, I thank, thank our staff very, very much for all of the work that they've done. And I'm very, I appreciate my colleagues' support. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everyone who worked so hard on this. The next item is item number 292, please, Carla.
Approve application under the Multiple Unit Limited Subvention Program, the Inclusionary Housing Program for Modera Woodstock located at 4850 Southeast Woodstock Boulevard.
This is also a second reading. Any further business or discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
And I'm really grateful to Shannon, Shannon, our Director of Housing, for really spending time helping me really go through this multi-program. I still have very severe concerns about this particular project because this particular project overwhelms large families in one building. And I don't think that this, that what we're getting in return for this project is worth the, the harm that I think we're going to do to low-income families surrounded by 90-some market rate units. And so because of that, I am going to be a no vote on this. So I vote no.
You, Daily?
I, as a result of this conversation, really interested in taking a closer look at our reconfiguration standards and to strengthen those standards. I do not think they were well thought out or appropriate. For a development of this size, the city should be receiving more than five units, particularly when those units include four-bedroom units that are essentially the same size as the market rate two-bedroom units being provided, which I do not think is in the spirit of inclusionary housing. I want to thank Commissioner Hardesty for flagging this concern. I want to reiterate my support of inclusionary housing done the right way. I am going to support this item with reservations and regret. I don't believe that we can apply retroactive standards to a project that is this far along, but I don't want to see this happen again. So aye.
Fritz?
Well, I had a very different reaction to this project. I'm thrilled. I don't remember another project where we've had four-bedroom units. And I know that having divided space is very important to larger families. And, and I think that the presentation that Dory Van Barco gave last week showed that it is getting us good value for money. I agree with my colleagues that if we need to revisit some of the standards, that should be done in a holistic and not project-based manner. But this project does comply with the standards that are currently in place, and I'm very pleased to support it. Aye.
Wheeler?
Yeah. So we, we had an interesting conversation around this one last time. So I, I did a little bit of research. And what I found out was those original configuration strategies were proposed by Commissioner Novick when he was here as a city commissioner. And at the time, the discussion was around making sure that there was equity and inclusion, that there were units that were large enough for families, particular, particularly families of low or moderate income. However, I also understand that with time, we can see that there are unforeseen consequences of policies, no matter how well-intended. And in this particular case, one of the potential loopholes in the inclusionary housing policy is that you can take a relatively small unit and you can put up dividing walls and then qualify for the benefits under the inclusionary, the inclusionary housing, that be effectively the bonus that would be granted to you. So I believe this was done with good intent by the prior city council. I believe the values were the right values. But I believe this is also an opportunity, as Commissioner U. Daily said, to take a look at those standards and evaluate whether or not they're actually accomplishing what the city council intended them to do, or whether there are unforeseen consequences. So I will direct that the Housing Bureau and others begin that look to make sure that, that we're all confident and comfortable with the strategy that's been established thus far. I also agree, we should not change the game rules after the fact. I don't think that's legal. And quite frankly, I don't think it's fair. So today, I will certainly vote aye for this. I will support it. But we will also take that hard look and kick the tires good and hard to make sure that the inclusionary housing policy is doing what we want it to do. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please, is item number 293.
Amend Parks and Recreation Development Charge Code to update the annual fee index methodology and delay indexing the charge until fiscal year 2021-22.
Colleagues, this is also a second reading. We had a good presentation and a good conversation about this when it came before the council previously. Is there any further business on this item? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
You, Daily?
Aye.
Fritz?
I continue to be very impressed.
I continue to be very impressed with the great work that Park staff are doing. Aye.
Wheeler.
Yeah, it was a great presentation and it was very clear to me that a lot of work and thoughtfulness went into that presentation and the work underlying it. I want to thank everybody from the Parks Bureau for their good work on this. I'm happy to vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Carla, if you could please read the next two items together, 294 and 295.
294, update, adopt the update to the River District Right-of-Way Standards to include special street design standards for new extensions of Northwest Johnson Street and Northwest Park Avenue, including updates to street classifications and performance criteria to address design considerations of protected bicycle lanes, transit enhancements, and the Green Loop. 295, amend the River District Master Street Plan to clarify the required new street and pedestrian connections through the United States Postal Service site.
Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, before introducing these items, I'd like to make a motion to request to accept the substitution for Exhibit A for item 294.
So I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion from the mayor, a second from Commissioner Fritz. Carla, please call the roll on the substitute.
Hardisty.
Aye.
You, Daly.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
The substitute's on the table. Back to you, Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. The River District Master Street Plan and Right-of-Way Standards are regulatory guidelines and standards related to street connections in the River District area of Northwest Portland. P-BOT advancing updates to these two documents to support development of the United States Postal Service site. The updates are built upon the Broadway Corridor Framework Plan and the standards are designed to echo the traditional Portland street grid with pedestrian-oriented connections while preserving room for a large extension of the North Park blocks through the heart of the site. The update also includes guidelines to support adopted city initiatives of Central City in Motion, the Green Loop, and the Rose Lane Project. Now, I'd like to invite Nick Falbo from P-BOT to provide an overview of the TSP update. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor, for your time today. My name's Nick Falbo. I'm a senior transportation planner with the Portland Bureau of Transportation. And I'm going to be presenting on the updates to these two documents. They're coming to you today because they're important regulatory tools that impact how our city grows and requirements we put upon developers. And they're coming to you now because they're a part of the critical path for the USPS site master plan, which is going through the Design Commission process. These are kind of technical documents. I'll try to keep the presentation brief and give you an overview of what they do, how they're structured, and what our updates are. I do have a presentation I'd like to present that I have supplied. Thank you. All right, so if we go to the next slide, we can just jump straight in. The River District is an area of Northwest Portland. It is bound generally by Burnside Street on the south, I-405, and the freight lines to the west, and the Olamet River on the north and east. This includes the entirety of the Pearl District and most of the Old Town neighborhood. This area was established in the early 90s to guide development of the area, and it is a framework that we continue to use today. Next slide. The updates to our documents are built upon council initiatives and adopted plans, primarily the Broadway Corridor Framework Plan, which was adopted by city council in 2015, designed to clarify the requirements and the street connections through the USPS site. We're also using this as an opportunity to incorporate changes to the guidelines and standards to support Central City in Motion, the Rose Lane Project, and the Green Loop Concept Report. Next slide. The documents we're talking about today are these two documents. The Master Street Plan, which specifies the location and extents of new streets and pedestrian connections through this part of the city. It doesn't prescribe design details, but instead connectivity requirements. The Right-of-Way Standards is a second document that gets into the details of what these streets look like. It specifies the design and construction details of typical and special streets in the district. Next slide. While these are technical documents, they are important. And so we've brought them to the neighborhoods and the organizations that are affected by them through our public involvement process. We met with the Pearl District Neighborhood Association, the Old Town Community Association, and the Pearl District Business Association to share with them why and what we were updating in these documents. We met with the Broadway Corridor Steering Committee, which is the Prosper Portland-led group looking at the Broadway Corridor Master Plan as a whole. This is an important implementation tool for their work. We met with the Design Commission and had a hearing about the Right-of-Way Standards and part of a briefing with the USPS site. And then we had a hearing with the Planning and Sustainability Commission and received their approval of the updated Master Street Plan. And of course, on top of all of this specific outreach, the recommendations and the changes are built upon many years of work from Prosper Portland as a part of the Broadway Corridor Master Plan and the additional public involvement done in other past planning efforts. Next slide. The first thing I want to share with you is the update to the Master Street Plan. This is sort of the foundation for how the city grows in this part of town. Next slide. Master Street Plans are part of our Transportation System Plan, a required element really designed to specify the layout of local streets and other important street connections. Next slide. We have master street plans for many different parts of town. It doesn't cover the entire city, but it is concentrated on areas we expect to see significant amounts of growth and where we want to see a significant amount of change in the street network. This includes areas like South Waterfront and areas like Gateway. Now, one of the most successful master street plans that we've had is actually here in the River District. Next slide. This is what the River District looked like, the Pearl District area, in 1995, made up of industrial warehouses and large, blank, open areas that were formerly rail yards. Next slide. And today, we have a new neighborhood with new streets and new connections that reestablish this 200-foot block pattern through the area. Next slide. With the exception of the USPS site, this is a little donut hole in the middle of the River District. And this is the area that we're here to look at today. Next slide. The plans for the USPS site are undergoing continued public discussion, but the general framework has been established and draft master plan is available. And it establishes new street grid through this site. You can see on the diagram on the right, the new street connections that are proposed, recreating this 200-foot street grid with pedestrian-oriented streets and pedestrian connections. They do preserve, however, a larger area for an extension of what will be the north, more of the North Park blocks through the heart of the site. Next slide. This is the currently adopted River District Master Street Plan. It does include new street connections through the USPS site, but the connections don't reflect the current understanding of the planned improvements. Next slide. There are a few changes we need to make to make this conform to the current proposal. That includes designating Northwest Currie Street through the post office site as a full street connection. This is going to be the primary vehicular access to the buildings on the site. We've got a couple of street removals. One of them is Frontage Road along Broadway's Viaduct that exists today. It's not a part of the future plans. As well as removing a segment of Irving Street that is currently shown as traveling through this extension of the North Park blocks. And the current proposal doesn't include that connection. Instead, in favoring a larger open space for the community. These are pretty basic changes, but they carry with them major implications for the development of the site, which is why it's important to look at them today. Next slide. The other document is that of the River District Right-of-Way Standards. If the Master Street Plan guides where the streets are, the Right-of-Way Standards guides what those streets look like. Next slide. The document itself provides the standards and required improvements in the River District Public Rights of Way. This applies to both private and public street improvements. So it largely applies to developers who are building new developments in the area. But if the city were to initiate a public works project, they would also refer to these guides to guide their work. Next slide. The document itself has three main sections. One of them is that of the Framework Plan. This is a high-level kind of overview of the street networks and standards that apply in the River District. Includes many maps that talk about Transportation System Plan classifications, the widths of the streets, the identification of typical or special streets, and includes other important design details such as tree canopy preferences and street lighting preferences. Next slide. The next section in the standards include the performance criteria. This is a set of design guidelines that guide the design details of individual right-of-way elements. It talks about the proposed potential widths of vehicle lanes, bike lanes, sidewalk dimensions, and sidewalk details. It's meant to guide and not prescribe design solutions. The next slide. And finally, it ends with a series of design standards. These are much more specific sort of engineering drawings that provide details for the materials and scoring patterns of typical street segments such as curb extensions or corners. It also includes design details and standards for special streets, such as the Northwest 10th Wood Boardwalk. It would be included in this. Next slide. We will be updating all three of those sections in this update to reflect these new streets that are passing through the post office site. And in particular, two streets have the most change. That's Northwest Johnson Street, shown in green in this diagram, and Northwest Park Avenue, shown in blue. These are both proposed as new special streets in the district with special street design standards. I'm going to give you a quick overview of what those changes would be. Next slide. Northwest Johnson Street travels horizontally east to west through the site, and it is envisioned as the main street for this new development to support all of the pedestrian activity and concentrated retail we expect. We're proposing it with a wide 20-foot sidewalk on the north side of the street to take advantage of the sun exposure that that side of the street will get. On the south side of the street, we're proposing also a wider-than-normal sidewalk of 16 feet, pairing that with a wide protected bike lane that can connect into the bikeway network of the rest of the Pearl District and Northwest neighborhoods. In the center of this block of this Johnson Street is a special segment that's going to be designed as what we call a kind of a level surface street, a plaza-like street, where the kind of definition of the street between the building and the street and the park starts to blur, creating more of a public space, a space that could be shut down for events, and a space that creates a really unique feel here in the USPS site. Next slide. Park Avenue connects to this segment of Johnson Street, and it itself carries that same special design through the site. So this is this level surface street, curbless construction, designed to feel more like a plaza than a street, more like an extension of the park than of a typical standard street improvement. In addition to these two streets, we're using this update as an opportunity to advance other city council adopted plans and projects. Next slide. This includes updates to the bicycle facility section of the standards to include neighborhood greenways, protected bike lanes, and better bike parking. This would be in support of the Central City in Motion Plan. And we're also using it as an opportunity to remove some of the older types of bicycle facilities that no longer apply. Next slide. We've also updated and expanded the Transit Performance Criteria in this document to include transit-only lanes, business access and transit lanes, and improved transit stop design. Next slide. And then finally, we're also adding in a section to the Performance Criteria for the Green Loop. This is our Central City linear park and path connection. This is to advance the Green Loop Concept Report, which calls on us to finalize details related to the alignment, the basic design dimensions and design principles. So we've incorporated some of those basic details into these guidelines to guide our work when work on those streets begins. Next slide. And that's it. That's my overview of the update. I tried to keep it brief, and I'm happy to answer any questions about these documents and this update.
I don't see any questions off the bat. Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes our presentation. Do we have any public comment?
No one signed up.
Very good. That was an excellent presentation. I appreciate it. I'm particularly excited about the Green Loop concept. This is a, 294 is the first reading of the non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Item number 295 is also a non-emergency ordinance. It also moves to second reading. Next item, please, is 296.
Authorize Portland Water Bureau to acquire necessary easements for construction of the Corrosion Control Improvements Project through negotiation or the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you may be thinking this seems a bit familiar. And the reason is that, yes, we heard this before in July of 2019. Remember July of 2019, when things were a bit different? As you will recall, was a nearby property owner who was concerned about this item. The Water Bureau is required by the Oregon Health Authority to construct a corrosion control improvements project. And this is going to be at Lusted Hill, the current site for corrosion control. In order to do this, easements are required for the construction and maintenance of the conveyance pipes. Most easements for corrosion control projects have been acquired, but two of them need some modification, needed some. The easements are now smaller. They allow property owner access to Lusted Road, whilst still allowing the Water Bureau to construct, access, and maintain the infrastructure pipe. And Teresa Elliott, the chief engineer, and Ben Grasset, the right-of-way manager, are here to give further information and take any questions.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer, Portland Water Bureau. In addition to Ben, I also have Michelle Cheek, who's the project manager that can help us answer questions. We're here asking you to authorize us to proceed with acquiring our new easements necessary for construction of the project. And if the negotiations fail, which we don't expect them to, then we're asking for the city's authority to exercise eminent domain. The project will make the Portland's waters less corrosive to lead found in the homes and building plumbing. It will reduce lead in drinking water levels at the customers' taps. The project is required to comply, as the Commissioner said, to the federal lead and copper rule and must be completed by April 2022 through compliance with the Oregon Health Authority. Ben and I were in front of council, again, as Commissioner mentioned, back in July when we brought this ordinance originally to you. During the first reading, the legal counsel for the property owner testified that they hadn't adequately been informed of the acquisition and that the acquisition was too large. And over the last eight months, we've been working with the property owner to reduce the impacts to their property, and we think we've come to a successful conclusion with them. And we've incorporated those changes in the design to reduce the scope on their property. We've acquired, we actually acquire all of our acquisitions in accordance with Oregon Revised Statutes 35, which is the eminent domain, I'm sorry, public acquisition of property, including with respect to giving notice value offer and, if necessary, relocation and eminent domain. The cost to acquire the easements will be determined by the appraisals. And the appraisals, once the appraisal is done, then we will negotiate the payment or just compensation and enter agreement with the property owners to address construction management concerns. If no satisfactory compensation can be negotiated, then we will do fair and just compensation or any other appropriate issues connected with the acquisition. Then it's determined by the Multnomah Circuit County Court. Construction's expected to begin summer of 2020, this summer. And it will start at our Water Bureau Lusted Hill facility in East Multnomah County. This council action doesn't have any direct impact, positive or negative, on the local community. The council action doesn't directly impact any of our The, the council action doesn't directly impact any of our minority or women contracting communities. It's just for the property acquisition itself. Our construction project will include a community equity and inclusion plan to support opportunity, creating opportunities for disadvantaged minority-owned, women-owned, and emerging small businesses, and minority and women in the workforce. Our next steps are to hire the appraiser. And the property owners will be invited to accompany the appraisers when they go out to the site, and we'll do the appraisal, and then we will start our negotiations. And that, Ben, Michelle, and I are here to answer your questions.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Teresa, that was the most, for someone who knows nothing about what you just said, it was the most succinct and understandable presentation I've heard in some time. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. My question is kind of the process after the appraisal happens. You said you've been working directly with the property owners that will be impacted. I'm asking you to look into your crystal ball. Do you believe that we will be able to reach a good settlement? Or do you think that we will be forced to use eminent domain as a last resort? Just kind of what's the, what's your estimate about how successful we're going to be negotiating a good outcome with the property owners?
I'm going to let Ben answer that. In general, though, I believe we will successfully negotiate it. But I will let Ben do it, answer, because he has been the one that's been talking directly to the property owner.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ben Gossett. I'm the Right-of-Way Manager at the Portland Water Bureau. To answer your question, Commissioner Hardesty, the, the next steps in the process are to complete an appraisal in conformance with Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 35. That process will basically equate a cash value to the easements that we're acquiring. In addition to compensation, owners are frequently concerned about different impacts to their property. Many of those issues have already been discussed with these owners and tried to mitigate their concerns where, where possible. But we have not yet taken steps to value the easements. So I think my anticipation in the future would be that any objections would be related to the value as opposed to the property impacts. I don't have a crystal ball, but I will tell you that the Water Bureau goes above and beyond to work with owners, negotiate with them, and try to find a fair value for the easements that we're acquiring.
Thank you for that. My last question is, is there a different process when we are mandated by the federal government to make changes as compared to if the city of Portland just was doing this on its own?
I can chime in on that as well. There are procedures related to eminent domain that apply to any type of project that would involve federal funds. This project does not involve federal funds. However, because we are reserving the rights, we want to reserve the rights to use eminent domain as the last resort, we follow, again, the procedure set forth in ORS 35, which mirror the federal property acquisition standards. So although we aren't required to follow that federal standard, we do it because we are doing acquisition pursuant to the city's eminent domain authority.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Teresa and Ben, for presenting. Thank you also to Karen Moynihan. I'm glad that you're the city attorney staffing us today, because I know that you have worked really hard on this. So again, colleagues, this was before as in July, and we've spent till now to bring it back, because we are not, we can't be certain, but we are very hopeful that we will be able to negotiate with all of the property owners. Ben Gossett did reach out to everybody and invited them to come and testify today.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Any further questions, colleagues? Seeing none, this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you all, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks a lot, everybody. Thank you, Carla.
You're welcome.
Thank you.